Great, we have a guest speakers. Please feel free to join us.
Thank you, Mary Ann Graham, and Councilor and staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to bring up and speak. I'm here representing the Waukesha County Area Community Foundation. Thank you, Steve, for always being a really great partner. And just want to bring it up, say a couple of things and, you know, always plug our mission as well. We were really sort of an organization that wanted to give back continually to the communities of Waukesha County. And we've got kind of two main things that we do. One is we're trying to very actively build an endowment fund that will allow progressive to get funds. Our goal is to get that fund to one million dollars by 2027. But our financials are looking great. We are just always poured by the generosity of the community. And at this point, our endowment fund is saving about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we've got a, you know, only a relatively small way to go to reach that one million dollar goal. The way that our grant making in our community works is that basically our fund are managed by Smith and the Southwest Initiative Fund. They help do all of our financial, leisure investing and all that kind of stuff for us. And a lot of them have a five to one C3 data so that anybody who wants to donate can do so in that tax manner. Every year they make deals to allocate that we're able to give out so that their, so that our endowment is never basically. So I have four point five percent. Once we reach that one million dollar mark, we'll have forty-five thousand dollars to give to the community. This year, our grant making goal is about twelve thousand dollars. Hopefully by next year, it's somewhere in the twenty thousand dollar range. If this endowment continues to grow. So we have received fewer grant applications this year than we had in the past. But we've been really pleased to be able to get the thing that the Waukesha County Area Community Foundation this year. Waukesha Main Street, the sacred space of the mural that will be hopefully starting this, this stadium that we're set to see take shape. The Marfield End Useable has been put on that hard jack. What we've built is got a good fund, the same deal is playground equipment, improvement project, and that dedicated party. So our best leader ends, there is, so we've got a couple of important meetings to go. So, so one of the, like I said, one of the main things is our endowment fund that wasn't tagged in perpetually. But also there are some other things that we do, one of which is the local giving campaign. All area residents in the zip code of the town in Waukesha County. And maybe a couple of the nearby ones will receive in their mailbox a letter that promotes giving to the bill giving campaign. This year, we have fourteen different service organizations that we are basically, you know, raising money for. So any, any check that comes to us, which here are, for, for example, how about the health center or greater homes? We just like hang out of that and then once all that money is collected, we issue a check right out of August. So we got kind of a donor appreciation event for the local giving campaign in August. And I mean, have a community consultant. So also would like to thank the city, you can be a great partner with the pool. Some of the members of the Waukesha County Area Community Foundation have felt very strongly about, you know, that the pool being a very active part of our community. And have felt strongly to be able to give in order to allow for free pool fuses. And in working with staff, we understand that that's kind of the changing target is funding that has cost a lot. So we're looking to give a little bit more than we have in years past. And that's something that we want, we always wanted to do, but to get kids at that pool and using it during the summer is wonderful. So another thing that we, that we do to help build our, not only our endowment, but also, you know, our community is, in the fall, we post a will in a state planning meeting. Where local financial planning and legal counsel or representatives can, can help people understand what it means to plan for their estate. And potentially be something like the foundation or other positive that they build or support them in their estate plan. That's a free service that is a good, good community outreach that's under the community. I'm going to leave some brochures on the table. One of the brochure for the Waukesha County Area Community Foundation itself. The other is for another program that's here, which is called the Patriots for Good, which is the land sector program. So if individuals who are wealthy in land are able to give, of course, for that, that can be perpetually used to generate funds for local giving in our, in our area. That's a program. So you guys can take a look at that if you'd like to. The last thing I want to say is that we're really lucky that our past president, Bob Mann, is actually just has been nominated to be on board of Smith. So one of our very multiple representatives that will be working on Smith, which is that organization that helps economic development in this twenty county region in the southeast part of the state. So again, thank you for being one of our partners and we look forward to working with you in the future. Any questions at all? Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your leadership. Thanks for your board.
Yeah, our board is great.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And if there's any other public comment, you can hear that now if you've never done that before and online. Unmute yourself and go ahead and vocalize, let us know your, your residence and name for the record. And then just share any thoughts you have with council.
No.
All right. I'm not seeing any public comment. Changes or additions to the agenda? Any changes by staff or council?
I'd like to pull numbers, seven from the percentage of the.
Okay. First read of the City Council Section Seven Secret Committee's Commission to Repeal Consent. And I will bump up the general business. The lease agreement, general business ten three will take first so that the future organizers can, can have that item managed and they can decide if they want to stay there. All right. Hearing no further changes. That will rest that we're looping in. So in the consent. Just seven, I don't believe seven, we'll put that after, right after, which is why I don't forget about it, put that right after the future lease. All right. I don't really have a presentation. It has been one heck of a busy month. Staff has been really busy. I really appreciate everybody's extra work on flood mitigation efforts. It was kind of stressful. Darren and I were getting a call, I think every day for a solid week from the local news outlets. I did learn that there is a Rochester Star Tribune reporter, which is kind of nice to know. So we do most of the local there, but I mean, it was every, it was every day and sometimes multiple times a day. So thanks to everybody who, who worked so hard to make sure that we're underway toward cleanup. And I know Darren will give us an update with regards to that. It's just kind of airing for a while. We've had some good meetings. We have been a good meeting with the core, kind of getting closer and closer to the section two seventeen D. I had a meeting with Colonel Swenson, which was very good. I probably haven't gotten a chance to know him yet. I just urged him that this may seem new to him, but all the work that we've done has felt really, felt like about a decade of work for, for the city. And lots of, lots of resources, both financial and human, have gone into getting this far and urged him to see to it that this gets signed. He feels very positive that we'll, we'll get there soon and that we impress, the press will come to that. So that was good. And yeah, I think that's, we're having housing again tomorrow. The watch committee will meet tomorrow at eleven. And our quality realty is that, is that meeting location for anybody who's interested will be kind of digesting after we receive the housing study and the analysis of strategies. We'll be going through that a little bit more and then we'll be having a public, I guess, an open meeting of both council and court authority to digest that housing study. Hopefully see it adopted. So we'll talk about that a little bit later. And then I think most everything else is going to be covered by Caroline.
Can you shut off your testimony?
I did testify to the Senate on a transportation committee related to our highway sixty reroute. Jeff and I were going to drive off and it was restricted to three minutes and it just was kind of a crummy weather night. And I thought, we can do this online. And many of the testimonies were, were given online. But Jeff jokingly said, maybe I should take the call from the flooded athletic fields or bridge terminus to kind of make a case. I decided not to spare the connection with the Senate over, you know, we, I just decided the drama would be good, but I'd really need to be connected when they call my name. But it was, it was good. It's actually a really good, interesting, I thought it was an interesting hearing. There's a lot of really particular local road projects and transportation projects. Some of, you know, there was stuff in southwestern Minnesota where I'm from, and I could imagine the roads they're talking about. So it's just interesting to hear one of their communities are testifying for, for bonding dollars. Caroline will comment a little bit about, we're not, still not quite sure where that bonding bill is, but nevertheless, we were happy to get that hearing. I mean, it's, I guess, we haven't met since we had Senator Amy Klobuchar here. Also, when we were just anticipating flooding, we had Jean Poppy, who works for Tina Smith. She was in the House of Representatives, but she's on Tina Smith's staff. And so we had a lot of good attention for our representation. Representative Finstat, Congressman Finstat's staff person visited with us all in that same week. So it's just been a flurry of kind of legislative advocacy, but it was good to get the hearing. Now we've got our talking points. We just won't decide where we go from here. So that's that. Yeah. Committee reports. Let's see utilities.
Yeah, I was nine with ten utilities yesterday, but it was just business as usual. So not in the report.
And Tony Street and Perms? And any other updates you went on here?
Oh, we did not have a pardon board meeting halfway through last month. We had street commission today. We talked, we finalized Lawrence Boulevard. So they voted to install resident parking only signs from the Eagle Center down to the first, well, the only alley that kind of goes to Main Street through. It's about halfway down Lawrence Boulevard and then that's the kind of offset campers and different things, bigger items that pulling down there. So that's going to help with that hopefully. And also we talked about changing the direction back. On Lawrence Boulevard. So when you get down by the statue by the fountain, you just continue on now like the Harvard. So we talked about how that came about. The engineers recommended this other way due to the bus loading from the Eagle Center. But they voted to change that back. It's not that very popular and it's kind of a mess. So I got to confirm with the engineers, make sure that we can do that. So then we'll be working on that. And then I'm going to Google Culver and Dishing. We got some work out there, get sure to do. Then there's some stuff on the agenda for tree order, green orchard trees. I don't know whether anybody can put them in, but we'll deal with it here. And then Eagle Basin subdivision, we're going to raise some curb out there. That's got some big samples from one of the subdivisions put in. So Darren's going to talk about the flood update and that's about all I got. What's your next question?
Thanks. Did you have Bailey Adam? For Lawrence Club Bailey.
Oh, Bailey. Yeah, the one block of Bailey will also be residential parking only from Main Street to Lawrence Boulevard. So, yeah, obviously.
Thank you, Tony. I, I forgot one thing. We received a very nice email from the Lions Club District Governor about whether we need any assistance. Oh, there's flooding. And I just kind of heard that for you for staff consideration. But yeah, I was thinking about projects that are just mounting, you know, including trees and all the other stuff that, I mean, I know you're redoing some of the work that you already have done this spring. We can reach out to them and see how that.
I was trying to find that today because I'm trying to figure out where that came from and it was both emails and I was trying to scroll through.
Yeah.
But yeah, he, he offered like outcomes of volunteers.
Right. And our local Lions Club is just getting organized. So I, I mentioned that Jean is a member of council and is active in the club. So we'll just figure out how to.
Trying to find a time to run a volunteer crew. I'm going to walk out. If something, somebody else could help with it. I didn't probably be able to attend or even it was, so the whole file will figure something out.
Ah, okay. We'll, we'll see that email again. All right. And then actually, while we're hearing, it's on Seattle, it's on, go to Darren or.
All right. Well, if we're on the downhill side of the flood part of this, so that's good. Still get calls from the newspapers. So a couple today, trying to make it a little bit shorter than what they, they all don't talk for half an hour. But anyway, got that thing here. We're working with Public Health right now and Waukesha County Mercy Manager Brenda. And meet with them once a week and just trying to figure out what, what they have for resources. For like helping residents for cleanup and stuff like that. So they, they do have some kits available and that for that. And what that means, we're learning kind of what we got to do with do's and don'ts for, for reimbursement or what we possibly could get. So that's kind of where we're at with that. So yeah, just glad the water's going down and, and kind of taking a deep breath now and give a cleanup. But yeah, that's pretty much fire department wide. We've been, we respond to a couple of structure fires. So we've been kind of busy that way. Got a new guy who broke in pretty good. So a couple of good fires and, and yeah, that's pretty much.
And I should have checked, are all the streets besides the highway open? Yeah.
Besides Highway sixty and down by Ice Park.
Right. That's okay.
That's Park Cyber, you know, that are still underwater. The lower beach is still not accessible at Beaver Point. Um, yeah, there's a few that are, but everything's pretty much open otherwise. So.
All right. Yeah, I will just add, people are kind of asking, what's the next step? And Ryan, this time we're, our next step per the county is to assess damages and get damage numbers together because we have to exceed a certain threshold. So.
Yeah, we did. And with help around a little bit, the Waukesha County Mercy Manager, we're able to get the cheese we need and stuff to fill out for, to make sure we're staying on track. We're back. Is there is like a certain day window, thirty day window or forty five day window to have so much resources sent in and documentation and stuff? So we got to make sure we stay on that.
And will they visit before they determine whether we reach the threshold or does that come later?
It, they, she may have found like that they will send somebody down. As soon as we submit that in and file that, they'll, they'll send somebody down and, and have to walk through and, and basically kind of, you know. But she says she's also seen times where it hasn't been that way. So we'll kind of play it by ear. But yeah, usually, usually one person from there comes down and says some stuff.
All right. Well, thanks again for your time and you're pretty good in the press. So I started, I felt guilty initially sharing your phone number. Then I realized we're good. I was like, you know.
This is what it is. I don't like the live stuff. We're good. Making it work.
Thank you. Ryan, you want to share your staff please?
Um, yeah, our new, we told him when he started three weeks ago. So he's kind of getting promoted. We finished our new orientation process and getting some good feedback on that. So we're doing a couple of things that we're going to change the charter that into our paid on call set. So that worked out well. And I, I thank you all for talking to Darren today. I have received my last piece of information for our part time in OLS license. So I have a streak for the hour and that'll be turned in for my ring tomorrow to get sent. So I'm, I'm going to get, I won't know anything else.
Miniesta?
Oh, yeah, Miniesta, the call, John, I'm talking to them there about going to be silent contract and giving their money to us as well.
Okay.
So a bit of portion.
So we had high fives all around. Miniesta's in. That's the furthest outreach in township. So.
Or which apparently that, all of our townships, Miniesta is the township that we've been going through the most.
Okay.
So it's kind of a return, you know, of, I think, of my last seven calls, I've been four of them have been in Miniesta township. So on the big, but all been right on or right off how we're going before, right above where's water. So.
Well, it's front, it's in their, in their mind, like.
Yes. Yeah.
Like we need it to be. So that's.
Yeah.
So we did just a pepping township, check already that's already been deposited. So.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ryan. Uh, and then other, back to other committees, do I really need?
Yeah, we just reviewed and discussed a few changes to some arguments that'll probably be forthcoming next month or two. So nothing major.
And I was thinking myself, what happened with pork? Do we have pork? And we did have a porking.
Yeah, on porkery event on Tuesday, April eighteenth. I grabbed up the child to care grant program, sending a press release that's been on the city website and Facebook and Central Paper as well. I'm going to discuss the upcoming housing workshop and the small towns grants and the Barge Terminal update.
All right. The long here, Caroline.
So just the only thing on flood is Dean wanted me to share that he had written a post on Facebook with a hundred twenty-three people signing onto it. Just a thanks and gratitude and appreciation for city staff of Waukesha for their unwavering dedication and the hard work during the recent spring flooding crisis. And he just talked about just seeing firsthand all the efforts that were made, long hours, physical labor and emotional strain. So just, he wanted me to share that particularly with staff and everyone about his gratitude. And a hun- hundred, hundred twenty-five other people felt the same. So.
Probably a lot of people saying.
Yeah, even more. And yes. And then just on my, and I revised and submitted another grant application for funding two point five million in federal funds for the Barge Terminal Project. This is our third time applying. And so just to save money, instead of having another consultant do, I just filled in and, and did my best. And so I feel like I learned a lot in the process about things I never thought about. And I'm ready to fly for a fourth time or just every year. So we can get this project off the ground. So.
And Caroline mentioned she had a meeting with the pork association and was learning that, that's basically the way St. Paul and DeLuis and other large cities do it too. They have, there's a technical expertise that's, you know, embedded in our, you know, our engineers' worlds and even their consultants. And, and yet they can't kind of speak to some of the social, social justice and the environmental justice thing. I think they took care of pretty well, but we, we just kind of had to like do our best to really make sure we were totally responsive on every aspect of the, of the application. There was Tyler and everyone sitting through the feedback on that. It's like, if you don't explain yourself, they don't give you any hints. So, so hopefully.
And then we, we're in a meeting, John and I, yesterday, and we're now members of a corn association. And we're hoping for eight hundred eighty thousand, maybe through our bonding bill. So just, I need to follow up with all our policymakers in the past month. It's become increasingly urgent. We are able to access those low interest loan funds waiting on a bonding bill. So I'm going to, got some nice pictures from Tony and Darren about the flooding and the impact. And so I'm going to resend those photos and just touch base with where we're at.
And also thanks to Jim, if I accident a ton of drone imagery, which will be really helpful, both just for, for documentation purposes and just for even just communicating to our representation, whatever it is like when we have that level of products. All right. So that, we have the consent agenda without item seven. We have the tree replacement order is Tony, I'm going to do. We have support for two resolutions. One is for the, the development of a regional transit management organization. And the other is, I can't remember the first. Or, oh yes, for the support's income restriction being removed from tip in non-municipal counties. Both these came out of the Southeast Minnesota League of Municipalities meeting that I think Tyler was at. So we're, we were urged to support these. Also the May warrants, the city council minutes from our April fourth meeting, our, the chamber, this requesting a gambling and liquor license permit. Further reading is removed. And then we have the local board of appeal and, and adjustment, the evaluation minutes from their April meeting. And our special city also made minutes, which we just made the proclamation or declaration of emergency approval for emergency management pay during the flood. And the Eagle Basin subdivision, which Tony talked about, that's unjacking costs. With that, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Hello.
All right. I heard Tim and I are Dean. I have a first from Tim and a second from Dean. Please for the discussion, all those in favor say aye. Close same sign. All right. You do not have a public hearing tonight. So we will do the, what was general business ten three. We have guests with us from, I know all these guests. So I know what they're here for. So I don't know who wants to, do you manage it? Okay. So we'll probably move those to, okay. Caroline, Sammy, now people online for the athletic complex. Because we'll also bump that up and then just do our kind of typical city business at the bottom. Who would like to join? I saw, I think I saw Chris getting up. Welcome, Chris.
I'm Chris Simonson and I'm a longtime volunteer at the food chair and I'm currently the president of the board. And I have your notice that you would like to have a formal release with our building and that next whole comes to us. We are, it's a wonderful new space for us since we had to leave the hospital after thirty-five years of being in that building. And I don't think anything's been normal with the same any years since the pandemic. Yeah, but we're doing our best and we would like to continue the current arrangement of no rental charge for now. And I can help explain why the utilities are so much higher. Anyone's interested in that, I have a brief.
Yeah, please go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Well, as you probably know, the situation of people needing food assistance is nationwide, statewide. We are seeing numbers, everybody's seeing numbers that we've never seen before. And we still just, we get almost all of our food from Channel One Food Bank in Rochester. And almost, most of it is low cost, some of it's free. And that only, we only get that delivery twice a month. So we were open for several days and we have to make sure we have food for everybody during those times or we try to make sure. So we have been able to get grants to expand our capacity of coolers and freezers is the main thing. Because, and the other reason is that when I think those things are available at Channel One, Martha, we want to order as much as we can. Because we're really at the mercy of the USDA system, Channel One and Chilwell. Where they might have this excellent deal on hamburger. And then you won't see it for months or chicken or things like that. We just, we just never know. So when there's a deal, we want to stock up on those basics like hamburger and chicken proteins like that. So that is why when we, when we weren't able to store as much, we just could not keep up. And so the first people there, they got all the hamburger, even though we put a limit on it. There was just, there's such demand now. So that is one of so many coolers now. And I understand that the cost of utilities have come up this long. That is our story.
Thank you. Tiny slice of your story. I think I'm a little. Yeah, I kind of stumbled onto the board info because there was concern about where you could end up. And we had urged that the city help the food share, find a space, which turned out to be a very good thing. Some, some of you maybe know this, some don't. The, the freezers for the one part have been grant funded. So there's a lot of investment. There's a lot of county investment. There's a lot of local donor investment.
Mostly on the state program, the state by government program, the board staff, a few little foundations, but mostly that.
Yeah. And I was just learning even myself that, you know, when you say deals, it's, it's pennies on the dollar.
Oh, yeah.
So it goes a lot further for future to manage their ordering than just hope that donors show up with the right things that families need.
Yeah. We, we encourage voluntary donation because we can really love.
Really stress that. Yeah.
But we've had a lot of, since when we, when the hospital, we were in the hospital, we really had a infrastructure that they had. They cleaned, they gave us garbage bags and they clean supplies and they provided telephone and internet. And, and so that's kind of a learning experience too and expenses that we, we're just, we learn from it for free. And then it's just, now it's just trying to keep up with the domain. People are hurting.
Yeah. Did you, anybody else on the board want to share anything? Or do you want to kind of go over the, the lease terms?
Yeah, I think over the lease terms, Martha, did you have anything to add? Or I included your letter here. So they read that in advance as part of the, the council agenda. I think you did a good job of explaining the number of people you're serving and, and the on-demand has gone up for food. So.
I should introduce Martha Black, if we are manager, part-time manager. After about a year in the new building and losing all of those infrastructure pieces from the hospital, we realized we couldn't get by on all volunteer staff anymore. And so it was a hard decision, but we were lucky enough to get Martha for twenty-five hours a week. And then two more board members are here, Marilyn Wilkman and Dave.
Hey, hello.
Yeah, thanks for your.
Okay. Well, I guess just from my perspective, we did get some feedback on the, the lease. First of all, we put in for a two-year lease. So just looking for feedback. First of all, we put in for a two-year lease, so just looking for feedback, does that make sense to everybody? Uh, the feedback we received from them was if we should not choose to extend beyond two years, theoretically, they need to find a new place. So they'd like a six-month advance notice if we don't extend. So that just came in, I think, today or yesterday, that request. Um, and then just the staff recommendation is, you know, there was, in my time, we had like a five thousand dollar bill or a, I can't remember. I've got too many numbers in mind. But we, we had to fix the roof on the chamber building recently. And so, you know, I think long-term, I would still urge someone to keep on our radar, long-term. I think the goal of having these taxable properties again makes sense, but it is serving an important purpose. So that's just what I would say is let's keep thinking about both those buildings in the long-term. Do we? Because I think at least for the chamber, it was Grandpa's Barn for a while and now they've decided not to do Grandpa's Barn. They're gonna continue owning the transfer building, but renting it out. But the day that they say we don't want those buildings, I think, you know, we'll be discussing again in the future, but there's a parking use there as well, now. Food share and chamber. So right now they're in use, um, but they're, they're not taxable, so. Um, so, um, and they'll eventually need more repairs. That's all I would say. It's up to you right now. Yeah, our current terms are, it's basically, I just wanted to point out, we're making about a thirty-six hundred dollar contribution to the food share by taking on the cost of the electric, because that's about what, what it is for, for a year plus the, the lease. So I just wanted those terms in writing and again, just checking in with council, because I think this happened under the context of COVID. And just, just checking in and make sure that we want to, to do that, because we'll make this decision now and then we're kind of probably locked in unless we amend the, the lease at any time, so.
I have one, uh, comment. Uh, in chat, uh, Linda has asked, is there a service available only for Wabash County? I don't know the answer to that.
Is the, are the, is the, are the services available? You mean, do you have to be a Wabash County resident to utilize the food share?
I think that's what she answered.
Okay, no, and I, and, and I'm not a good person to answer the why. I understand the answer is no based on federal funding.
Yeah, um, we, it's called TBAF. I don't exactly remember what that stands for, but it's a USDA program. That is why we get all of this food for pennies on the dollar. And, and from Channel One, if we limited to Wabash or Wabash County, we, um, wouldn't get those deals anymore, yeah.
And, and that's true of all food shares that we're seeing. Yeah, did you hear that answer, Dean?
I did, and I related to her.
Any other question? Yeah, Marilyn.
Uh, would it be safe to say, Chris, that most of our um, customers that come to the food share do come from Wabash County?
I would say yes. Uh, ninety-one or point five percent once in a while, especially it'll be a, a nurse from, um, the public health department who will have a client in Nelson and they'll ask, can we get food for that person? That's the kind of thing that, um, we do once in a while have somebody.
Well, this is their closest, luckily their closest community food share.
Well, so even though we can't turn anyone away from outside the county, our primary, um, customers that are using the food share do come from Wabash County.
Yeah, any other questions? And so the term, that was that the only term I skimmed it, but I didn't, um, the only term that, that food share would likely see changed is the.
Six-month notice that we don't intend to send our lease probably at any point. I think it's essentially, I'll rephrase it, but it's probably a six-month, six-month notice that we're gonna say you guys are, you guys are out, so.
You could probably do at least a fifty-dollar penalty for non-payment rent.
Yeah, Dean, he's making motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? I'll just say thank you so much for everything you've done. Community food shares are a relief of the deal. Thank you to the hospital for housing our community food share for thirty-five years. Cities often do have a role and often do make that contribution to the space and sometimes more than the space. So uh, I know Lake City provides.
City has the same setup as this.
Right, it's really important. It's really important. So I, you know, it was a huge upheaval for the food shares to, to, uh, get through in COVID to find a new home, but you've done a really good job. The board is very, it's really an excellent board, a lot of great leadership. Um, amazing volunteers, so.
Regular volunteers.
Yeah, yeah. And if you haven't been, I mean, it's really eye-opening when you see the amount, not just the volume of food, I mean, that's we all need a lot of volume of food to feed our families, but the work that goes into it, the physical work that goes into it and, and, um, what volunteers are contributing. Um, as well as the management. So having Martha on, on staff really allows for a much more efficient, I'm sure you would agree, much more efficient. Um, you know, you can, all the resources get stretched further because of her expertise and intuitive sense of how, how custom, what, how customers are going to be in things and when and how, um, our resources can line up to, to make the wins through that's been that's changing super. So we have a motion in a second. Here, no, the further comment, apples in favor say aye. Thank you, Dean. Alright, you're welcome to join us for the rest of our meeting. By reference, everybody's got a lot of a lot of busy, people have busy lives, so we won't be at all offended if you decide to leave. And we'll go to ten-four. Um, so this is the athletic complex bid and bid alternates.
Jonathan, I thought you could kick us off and then I could, um, go over what council's deciding on today.
Yeah, sorry, here. Can you hear me? Perfect.
We can.
Alright. Um, yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so Caroline asked me to kind of speak on, um, kind of the bidding process and kind of how we arrived, uh, you know, where we are. Um, and kind of, uh, set the stage for some of the results and, um, pricing that, uh, we'll go over tonight. Um, as we kind of make a decision about, um, you know, moving forward with the athletic park project and, um, awarding the project. Um, so I don't have any slides prepared, but just wanted to give kind of a, a background on the public bidding process, um, for those that may not be, um, you know, as, um, as familiar with that. Um, so um, essentially, uh, for any project over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, you have to put it out for public bid. Um, with this project, um, you know, of course, it was, it was over that threshold, so went out for public bid. Um, the, the project was advertised, um, on April fourth in the Wabash County Herald and then also online through Quest CDN. So typically, uh, when we advertise projects, we, we shoot to advertise those um, about three weeks prior to bid opening, um, and the, the intent with that is just to provide a an adequate window for, um, contractors to, to review plans, prepare bids and kind of, you know, do their due diligence on the project. Um, so plans were posted, uh, so the project was advertised, uh, April fourth, plans are posted to Quest CDN on April fifth. Um, and just to give a little background on Quest CDN, a lot of people probably aren't familiar with that platform. Um, essentially what it is, is it's kind of a, an online clearinghouse for, um, for publicly bid, um, projects. Um, and it's really intended to connect, um, contractors and, um, and, uh, um, equipment providers, vendors with, um, these, uh, plan sets so that they can prepare their bids. So we, we upload all this information to Quest and folks, um, contractors who are members of, of Quest, um, which, which typically most, uh, you know, uh, large to medium-sized contractors are, are, um, members of this platform. Um, so we, we post the information on there and it's really a one-stop shop um, where they can get all the necessary information on the project. So we pu- we post the plan sets, um, specifications, and then throughout the bidding process, if there's, uh, if we receive questions from contractors, um, there's an opportunity to provide answers to those questions through Quest, um, so that any, anybody who's bidding on the project has access to the same information. Also through that platform, we're able to post addendums to the plan set. So you know, if we receive a question or there's something that's unclear that we feel warrants a, uh, a change to the, to the plans or specifications, we're able to, uh, make some adjustments to those plans and reissue those on Quest. Um, and then that shows up very clearly, uh, through Quest that there's been changes to the plans and the contractors have to acknowledge um, that they've, that they've, uh, seen those adjustments and accounted for them in their, in their estimates. So, uh, at that, so again, we posted this, um, posted the plans April fifth. Um, the bid opening for the project was April twenty-fifth. So uh, just about at, um, you know, just about a three-week window there. Um, at the time of the bid opening on April twenty-fifth, there were twenty-five total plan holders through Quest. Um, with ten of those being prime contractors. So the primes are really the ones who are, you know, gonna be assembling a team of subs and reaching out to, uh, vendors to get pricing. And really the ones who are gonna be managing and responsible for the overall project. So um, so of those twenty-five total plan holders, ten of those were prime contractors. And then from those ten prime bidders, um, we received a total of seven uh, bid submittals. So seven out of ten of those primes submitted, um, submitted bids, uh, which is a pretty good result. Um, we're pretty happy to see that. So, uh, during the bidding process, um, I, I talked about addendums a little bit. There was one addendum that was issued. Um, just to address some minor questions, uh, related to quantities and how items were paid for. Um, so there was one addendum that went out. Um, the other thing that was addressed through that addendum was a request from a concrete supplier to allow for um, concrete to be used, uh, on the parking lot in Batuminous Trails in place of, in place of asphalt. Um, so that was something that we accommodated, um, just in, in the off-chance that uh, for some reason, pricing for concrete came in cheaper than Batuminous, which, which, you know, we felt was a long shot, um, but, you know, it was a, an easy uh, easy modification to allow for that, uh, just, just point of comparison for pricing. Um, and then I guess, uh, just, uh, just to kind of, um, tee things up, uh, for Caroline and, and the further discussion here. Um, the, the bid results that we got were, uh, ranged for, for the base bid project ranged from one point five five six million to two point three zero seven million. Um, so you know, a, a, a pretty good range there. Um, our, our engineer's estimate was just shy of one point seven million, so kind of had results on both sides of that estimate, um, which we like to see. We certainly don't want to be the low bidder um, with our estimate. So happy with the results there. Um, and then, uh, you know, with that, uh, as I mentioned, there's, you know, there's some alternates, um, I think Caroline's got that teed up on the screen as well. Um, we did have five, uh, five to six bid alternates identified for, um, for inclusion with the project. And um, the way things work with those alternates is essentially, um, council can decide you know, which of these alternates they, they, um, you know, want to move forward with as part of the project. Um, you don't have to pick any, you could pick all of them. It's really up to the discretion of council. Um, but, uh, I think Caroline's got some information as far as, um, budgetary numbers, uh, to go over, um, to consider with that as well.
Um, any questions for John? Just the logistics of bidding, um, like you said. Okay, so I will go into the the numbers here. I'm just gonna share my screen so people online or on YouTube can see this. Um, but the, the contractor that they're recommending is, is known to both an inmate. Um, they're out of Chippewa Falls, um, with a lot of experience and they were by far the clear winner, like he said. So here's the numbers up on the board, um, for what we're looking at. Um, and so the big questions for you all today are which of the bid alternates do we want to include? And just for the purposes of having Mike Vani do estimates, um, because like I said, for the twelfth street access walking and bike trail, that might be a philosophical or a policy decision for everyone, but what it amounted in, in terms of what we owed back in borrowing was like a thousand dollars a year in debt. So it wasn't a big factor in debt. It's more about is, are we interested in including that or not? Um, and then the other thing that sticks out is the post-tension concrete tennis and pickleball courts. Um, that is gonna be an additional, additional a hundred fifteen thousand for eighteen. But as I noted, for borrowing debt purposes, we have about, I think, eighty thousand that's committed on hand and expect to get another twenty thousand if we move forward or at least twenty thousand, hopefully the full difference maybe, um, if we move forward with the post-tension concrete cost. And so I asked Mike, well, what if we got rid of the post-tension concrete that theoretically, theoretically, you know, didn't have that cash contribution towards the the courts and it, it's awash financially. It's about the same, um, so. Um, so, so just from, I included, um, Mike Vani's estimates here of what this means in terms of financing for the city. But at, oh, and then the hockey rink lighting, we're definitely, staff is recommending the, we include that, um. I would, if you have more questions on that, Tony can speak on it, but um, here's the financial summary I wanted to draw your attention to. So the big question, I think, from a financing perspective is the warming house and whether or not to include it. And the reason why it was separated is because if we don't move forward with the warming house concession this year, it's not part of our range. So we need to move forward with hockey rink, tennis courts, baseball, softball field and get that done this year. Um, in order to get our three hundred thousand dollar DNR grant. But the theoretically, the warming house concessions could be done by staff, led by staff in terms of bidding that out later and fundraising for it separately. In, in cash and wait to do it till we had both a, a bid and Tyler has taken the lead on on getting another separate bid. But informally from Jonathan, they, they thought the price we got, which was was three, three ninety-three seemed, seemed high. It does seem high. I'm sorry, I looked at Josh's face, so.
Well, uh, just to clarify. Sorry about that, Caroline. Um, just to, just to clarify too on the, the cost of that. Um, the, the bid, uh, for alternate three from Pemb- the warming house from Pembroke was actually three twenty-nine, seven ninety-eight. Um, so it's lower than that three ninety-three.
That's still up.
Two five million.
Alright, so.
I have a question on that warming house.
Yes.
Does that include bathrooms, I hope?
Yes. You have two accessible unitx bathrooms, uh, you know, it's, it's conditioned for storage year-round, uh, you know, so it's, it's a very complete structure, but it, it's a pride of us.
So, um, what highlighted in the yellow is what we are anticipating the annual levy amount, the borrowed amount that we be paying for the athletic field. Scenario one is without including the warming house cost. And zero two is one thirty-nine, four ninety-nine per year in debt. And then one sixty-five, two eighty-four. Um, is with borrowing for the warming house. Um, I think staff would be remiss to not say that the warming house concession bathrooms is critical to the project. But we are hopeful about the generosity of the community, but it's not necessarily perhaps we kind of have to wait, you know, like I said, we've already kind of counted a hundred thousand in tennis court donations that's been taken off the farm in total, so that'd be additional money to raise. And then plus trying to get a bid on it. So, um, but that's a pretty, it is a difference. And so what Mike told me is that if the street project comes in as expected, um, cost-wise, it is affordable to include the warming house in our borrowing right now. But with the way things are, we really, we don't have that information at this time. So, yes.
Oh, I, I see, I see we go one and two.
One is one is almost paid for. Two, the kids can only play hockey till five o'clock. We don't have lights there and we're not gonna get any cheaper on them. The rest, I don't feel like we need. We can get a warming house built for way less than that. The other stuff, I don't I don't feel like we need it. Altered altered it one and two.
Um, okay, sorry. You came prepared. For the rest of us scrambling like, what do you need me to sell energy work? Um, okay, so let me pull out. So one and two was, let's go back to the. Bit alternate uh file there. Okay.
For pickleball court, post tension concrete.
Okay.
And moving the hockey lights from downtown up to the hockey rink.
Okay.
That's the two.
Okay. Um. I, okay. So I'm I'm just, yeah, on the trail connection, I've heard both ways. We definitely heard from the parks board. Um and others, they'd like that additional access added. Um but we certainly heard from a neighbor who was not interested in you as well.
Yeah, I'm not concerned with the neighbors thing so much because it's it is a publicly dedicated space, so. You know, their opinions aren't the end all, the end all. But I just feel like with the the amount of traffic and the amount of speed. And encouraging two sided parking, you're gonna be able to get one car from there with kids coming and bikes off and I don't think it's gonna work. So Pearson's, it's just not as busy. I mean, I see we put the stop sign back in. At tenth and Pierce to encourage people to slow down through there if we're gonna have people coming off the trail. Um but I'd rather have the access there than than on twelve street.
Yeah, I agree with Brian. I'm I'm all for one and two and get a different bid for the warming house and. It's the the tall street.
That's good. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would I would make that motion.
We you're gonna talk about the dugouts after those, right?
Yes.
Is that part of the same funding where it's like?
The dugouts has been assumed in your assumption is that we would also borrow to pay for the dugouts. Unless you want to try to raise for that, but the dugouts are included in the financing number.
Included in the financing, but we have a more cost effective strategy.
Yeah, they have that alternative bid.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's a separate motion, correct?
Yep, but it's included in the financing.
Gotcha, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion. Did I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Any comments from staff? I appreciate, you know, it we Tony and I were talking about this since way back that that. We feel like we can accomplish this warming house. We just didn't want it to be. A product about a product manager. So there will be that aspect of it, but you know, I think that level of structure is. Seems reasonable to manage by staff very well. All right.
Will you assign Tyler?
Well, we appreciate.
But I was just remembering, we do have a lot of public work staff that have that construction background. So like what Tyler and I cannot do is say somebody appropriately builds something. But I think there's enough technical knowledge within public work staff to just help us out. But the paperwork and stuff, we know public works is kind of busy summer ahead. Um and then we'll have to share this with our. Um fundraising efforts. Um Tyler has also taken the lead on talking to the Lions Club. And so we're hoping that they might rather run this project. Because as Tony pointed out, without a warming house or bathrooms or a conception, you know, the project doesn't work.
All right, so we have a motion for one and two. And a second, and all those in favor say aye. Thank you, Dean. Thanks for all the work that's gone into this. Considerate. Thank you, Jonathan.
Yes, thank you.
You have what you need then to uh award the bid?
Yes, yes, we should have what we need.
And when can we expect construction to start?
Um. That's a great question. Uh I would assume um. You know, we could see things starting probably. So on the front end, there's a lot of um you know, submit all work that needs to happen. Just shop drawing reviews, things of that nature. Um but I would assume, you know, probably in in June. Um we'd start to see some some work being done out on site.
Okay, that's what I've been telling people, June. And then we did receive a question in the chat during the discussion. Would it be possible? Use some of the current street lights on Main Street on this project and and Tony was asked that. And he is currently saying that probably the different that the Main Street lighting is is in would not. Be in condition to be recycled over here, but.
So we have talked about more additional lighting in this project, which is it's not in there, just the hockey rink lights, right?
Well, so, yeah, the way the the electrical was structured for the project is. There will be, there will be lights in the parking lot, um some overhead lights in the parking lot, and then we'll have with alternate two, we'll have the hockey rink lighting. Um there's also going to be uh be along the trail between the hockey rink and the parking lot. There's gonna be, I believe it's four. Um light pole bases, uh so light pole foundations that will be installed um with conduit running to them. Um to accommodate uh future light pole installation. So whether those are salvaged um light poles or. Light poles that are purchased. Um there will be foundations there that can support those lights.
We're gonna match that up because we have replaced sites out now for some that have been backed over and wind damaged. So we kind of have maybe eight or ten that are barely in the last ten years. The original ones are falling apart from the salt underneath or or rotten. But I mean, we'll, we're gonna work together to use what we can, yeah.
Thanks, Tony. All right, do you want to talk about dug dugouts? Is there any topic? Let's just go to dugout now. Okay, so I had pulled ten and five.
Thanks, Jonathan. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so this one you want Tyler to take this one? Yeah.
Sure, um yeah, we talked to um. Very well done. We reached out to him for a bid and he got back to us um quickly. Um the total cost being to fifteen thousand eight fifty five sixteen per dugout. Um so the total for for comes to sixty three thousand four hundred twenty dollars and fifty four cents. So um much while we're then both making quoted for a much higher quality dugout.
Yeah, yeah. If you didn't see the spec, it was sort of like um. Fencing, fencing with the like a tarp. And I do see those in dugout fields, but it's not for doesn't protect players from the elements, which we have plenty of elements. So this is a better, you know, presentation. Super. Do we have a motion to approve the dugout?
I'm over.
Thank you, Jim. Have a second.
I'll say.
We have a second from Jean. Any further discussion, questions?
Those seem to have focused on what you're doing.
It's based on real and recent costs for Hellock, so.
You know, we asked for a second, but and we were told they couldn't get close to this, so. Yeah, we did try to suck it good and they weren't effective.
I think dugouts recover the biggest cost of that whole field.
Yeah, I would say hopefully we can get donations for it, yeah.
Yeah, where's the money coming for this one?
So it is included in the borrowing. Um this is. Time to be later, um but we're we were hoping. To raise money for it. I mean, we can kind of coordinate in the next month. We won't actually go out and borrow for all this money. For another month because we're doing it together with the street project. So in the next month, I'm hoping we can just figure out what we think is realistic for fundraising. And I'll share that with with Mike Luwani, what our final borrowing amount is. But the likelihood is. We're gonna have to not exactly know how much we can raise to pay all of our bills. So Mike explained that if you get additional donations, you could square those away and it would go down. Pay back our debt without using tax levy. So um his recommendation would be essentially go conservative or, you know. Um so we're already committing fundraising to the cost of the warming house. If you wanted to go beyond that, Mike is saying I'd recommend. Still borrowing it, but then using tax, then using those donations to pay back the debt. But otherwise, we could take theoretically take the dugouts too, but then we need that money by fall because that's when. The athletic field will be done by fall and then we'll bring in this contractor to do the dugout, so. Yeah, do you have any thoughts on that? Okay.
All those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Dean, I I didn't catch your vote. Are you yea or nay?
Aye. I'm aye.
Okay, sorry, we just didn't get, we didn't get it. Thanks, Dean. All right. Next on the line, okay, next on, so we'll do the uh overnight docking on the. City dock for the National Eagles Center River Cruises. That's item ten two. Hi, May.
Sorry, I'm late. I apologize. I'm a bit under the weather, otherwise I'd be there in person. Sorry.
The agenda all over the place based on who's present, so it's not a problem. Go ahead.
So um we have a request in front of the council to do um. Uh overnight docking at the new city dock, just in front of the Eagle Center. We have uh we partner with various companies to do cruises on the river. To talk about eagles and other habitat issues. And we're this year, we're working with Cal Fremling out of Winona. And they want to come up through the lock and dam system and come to the center. Um most of their trips that we're doing, and it's a number of cruises this summer that are very successful. Um are out of Winona, but this year they've offered for our two summer and fall sore events to come and stay. And do their onboarding out of Wabashaw, which we think will encourage more people to come to Wabashaw. So our request is for um Friday, June twenty third and Saturday, June twenty fourth. And then September twenty second and September twenty third to allow them to dock overnight. Um on that new dock and we know it's an exception to the rule and are happy to abide by. Whatever the council thinks is appropriate. We just wanted to make sure that we. Gave them the option of doing that because it's a five hour trip to get up from Winona and we want to drive as many people. To Wabashaw for those weekends as we possibly can.
Thanks, we have a motion to approve the overnight parking request and it's it's also stipulates maybe maybe see that in the agenda. And ask that the requesters of the overnight parking managed securing their own spot. That was kind of what we learned from other cities. Uh is there is there norm? Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
We have a second from Brian and any further discussion?
Yeah, how many uh how much of the dock are they planning on using? Is the rest of it gonna be older than solid?
Yes, it will be. Yep, it will be, Jeff.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, just um staff had some discussion about this and what. We, I think, not a week after Tony posted, no overnight parking. So I was like, can I? So um to the musical boat request, they had mentioned they had some overnight accommodations elsewhere. Cars by the arena. So we're just gonna have them do that. But with, and that made me understand that this company, it was almost a contingency, like we'll come to Wabashaw, we can park overnight. So just Tony's main concern is as staff is with the flood cleanup. Is he gonna be doing boat parking management out of the dock like, you know, get out of the way, you know, this way. He'd also, they don't want to do that. Um.
And I don't blame.
We don't have dock handler, we're gonna be some of dock handlers there.
Well, what the heck? So I my my hope is that maybe the Eagle Center could put up a sign if needed to just say this is reserved. And nobody like, are we gonna have to call like the Wabashaw police if someone's in there? You know, so I think we were, but when I called Winona, they're like, we don't, when we have those big boats, we don't have to put up signs that there's enough space. And we'll say, let's see how this goes. If there's an issue, if there's fighting for spots, we'll learn from it. And then as a policy. Since this doesn't quite fit under streets and it doesn't quite fit under parks. We can take these requests in the future to council and get people a pretty quick approval. Unless it is deemed this may be make sense for a parks discussion in the future, but um. So this is our our second request and. Um we're just always sensitive to uh staff time on anything. So I think this is a good solution. Eagle Center will make sure they got a spot. It's hopefully not gonna take up all the socks and then we'll we'll learn and think over there.
And from our perspective, we know that this can be literally a slippery slope and we don't want to encourage that. We want to do this. Our perspective is let's do this on a case by case basis with council so that there's definite. Um benefit to the community and it's you know, it's determined where it is, the time of year, all of those kinds of things. So that we see the bigger benefit to the community is out there and you all have the ultimate decision. We are happy to provide whatever um personnel support you need to make it work.
Very good.
Okay, well, it might include dock handling.
I'll find somebody that does it, not me, but I will find somebody that does it.
Very good. Okay, uh good discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Thanks, Dean. All right, thank you, May.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, May. Have a good night.
I will. I also want to say to you all, I look forward to coming back at a future meeting to being able to update you. I was hope to be able to be there tonight, but um unfortunately, as I said, I'm a bit under the weather. But I'd like to give council an update on where we are in various projects and some exciting news that we have going. Um locally, state and nationally going forward. So hopefully we can get on the agenda and do that as soon as possible.
Sure. Just let us know when it works well for you. I think we can make that work in June or whatever.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, um now I don't want to miss anything. So we've got the guys to take care of future. So let's do the um township resolution on the ambulance township boards and Brian, that's location. And then uh his item is also one that. That's right.
Yeah, can you do that? All right, so is through our. Um there were a few townships that um is part of being able to provide us money. Um part of the bylaws was that they have kind of like the fire boards where they have representation on those. So they um wanted to have some kind of um representation. So this is what um which we're not pleased by administration approved. This was some changes from the original on that place. Put more than um so this is what we have. Um for the townships that we're doing two times a year. Um the first one, um probably late January, beginning of February to give them the annual report. Kind of a judge council, um give them an update of what happened throughout the year. About the second hour or later in the year, July, August, September, not exactly sure. Um exactly, but sometimes after we've formed an initial budget, um to give them um a look at that and. Some um input on if they have any questions, suggestions, comments on that. Um so I have a possibility that they were able to follow some um. Guidelines as everybody else and be able to apply the uh ambulance commissioner, there's an open space. Um they're they're also go through like anybody else who gets appointed, they would have applied the. But at least given the opportunity to fish, so wanted to be on it that they could follow that same process.
Great.
Did they have any desire to have a permanent spot on the ambulance commission? I mean, I was, that's why I brought I pulled that thing out of the.
So there there was no um true desire to have a permanent spot on the ambulance commission. I think what they're looking for is this township board. And I can't say, um but I think there there are a couple people from some of the townships that are sadly enough and they're interested enough. And I think they would like the ability to potentially the ambulance commission if they could, but it's not something. They would like the ability to potentially be on the commission if they could, but it's not something that. I, during my ease with townships, that they said, we want a spot on the ambulance commission, um, this was just kind of, you know. Uh, bit of a, we're, we're done providing that monetary support, but they could also be able to be part of.
Yeah.
The ambulance commission, but at the same time, it's not guaranteed, this is a group process, everybody else is still here.
Do you have a motion to the ambulance commission's resolution?
I move.
Staff, it's Tim, is that Tim?
Yep.
What's my Tim, second by John, any further discussion?
Yeah, there's two fives.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Two fives, it busts up.
It goes one, two, three, four, five, five, six.
Did you have, like, that, did you have a comment, Dean?
Yes, I did, um, where would this meeting be, uh, twice a year? What's that?
Yeah, that's a good question, um.
I would just have, where will it be?
Yeah.
I would just have.
You could do it at the ambulance station, and then they could see the ambulance stations.
Well, my only concern is it's a public meeting, so it needs to be accessible. Um, I don't know, township board meetings or buildings or stuff, accessible, but anyway, that's my concern.
Is the ambulance?
Your only big question for Dean is if they could fill through the door. On the wheelchair from the garage into the. Um.
You could just have it here.
Well, you could have it here too, who cares, I mean, the location.
You just want to.
Have it in the library if you want.
Location's accessible, Dean, that's your concern?
Yeah, as long as they're accessible, individuals, that's fine.
Okay. Go ahead.
So. You have representation from each township, but who's, do you have representation from council there too?
So the township board is for the, um, staff by, um, myself or if I'm on the table. Um, you know, we could potentially put a council member or. Carolina or senior.
I would just put Tina as second and have the commission as the person that has the council number, because that's.
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure it's by agreement, it's.
Yeah, in, in this, there's no representation from county as well.
Yeah, this is more. More information, it's not, they're gonna do own decisions, they're gonna be, they're gonna, they're, they're putting on the budget, but again, that's ultimately. Council's decision, but we said to.
No, the explanation that they need is townships versus full participation in ambulance, you know, which they don't necessarily need.
I'd probably go just like we did the free field anyway, um, because it was nice to have. Just input back and just discussion back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, you to ten.
Yeah, it's the ten, yeah.
It's about the acknowledgement. All right.
And I, I will say, um, with most who did show up to the, you know, Brian, Jeffrey. Tony and Lisa and everybody else who involved there, Caroline, the, the, the township review and review of the last one was a learning experience, I think, for anybody. Um, I don't think anybody that showed up there was ready for how townships do their um approval of their budgets.
Yeah.
Um, but I think it was so good that there was a lot of. Good questions that they asked and a lot of, you know, there's a lot of questions, but I would know that Brian and Jeff were. They will think it's for them, um, just because it was a council level that I just, was before my time that I didn't necessarily understand.
No, it's great, I think this is really great, and, and any of us can attend to, be, show support or participate in the order, they pass me for help. Super, um, I think we had a motion in a second, I did, we did, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose same sign. All right, thanks, Ryan, and then made him fold the item related to the constituency of the, um, the actual ambulance commission. And that was your question, Jess, okay, so with that, do we have any other questions regarding that item?
Yeah.
Changes?
Yeah, my question concerns seventeen point oh five, the power duties and responsibilities. Um, it doesn't seem like we incorporated any of the recommendations from the Gunderson uh study on ambulance service. I'll just read what they said, the, the way the roles and responsibilities are written, seems to give the impression that the commission oversees running the ambulance operations. The city of Wabashaw should reconsider rewriting the duties and numbers, once through seven, in the numbered sections, where the ambulance director is the one making the recommendations to the ambulance commission. I mean, this kind of ties into uh making sure that everybody knows you're the boss. I mean, it's not like I'm a street commissioner, you know, we're not telling Tony, you know, where he has to do maintenance or kind of truck everything, he has to buy everything. So I think this can be changed fairly simple by just getting rid of and ambulance director in most of these, uh, like in, in one. Uh, three, four, five, and then six could be, the word could be changed a little bit. I mean, I think that's just the, make sure that, you know, that you're not, it doesn't, I mean. It reads, when I read this too, I got the same impression that the commission is running the show, not you. And I want it perfectly clear that you're running the show, the police commission, I don't think it tells Joe how to watch out for the buyer, anything, so.
Well, and, and, yeah, means semantics a little bit, because they, they are making recommendation to, but they're not, they're not directing the work of the ambulance service.
How would you change it, Jeff? I think that's right, I understood it, but then I was.
Okay, for number one, I would say. Instead of make recommendations to the city council and ambulance director with respect to the blah, 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 I would say to receive updates and requests from the ambulance director. With respect to the construction, maintenance, blah, 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 and make recommendations of city council.
Okay, so that's, I think this would require a lot of revision, so I don't think we could pass it today.
No, no, you can send it back, and then, just like number three, all you gotta do is cross out and ambulance director, and that clears that up, and same with four, same with five.
So, really, you want to rewrite one. For. Um, three, four, and five, just delete and ambulance director. And then number six, I just did a little change it a little bit, I, I changed it to assist or provide input at the request of the city council. And or ambulance director, you got an opportunity for mutually, blah, blah, blah. Just, just to make it really clear in here that, you know, you're the boss.
Well, I moved to postpone to incorporate the language then.
Little more, give it a second.
Oh, so good.
If you want, Brian, second, and Tim, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose same sign.
If you was in mind, probably.
Oh, yes.
For my, now, so, so, for the first. Come back to us.
Very, yeah, I love to come to this first grade. Take it back for the other public hearing, you can, you change the language significantly. Let's do the public hearing here instead of at the ambulance commission, can we do that? Wendy, the first public.
Okay. Well, that, that, your next one sounds good, yeah. All right, thank you, Ryan.
Uh, there's one thing, another thing that I want to share with everybody, um, I can put the trail with this. Um, a feeling that a issue with our airheads, including our oldest ambulance, I mean, seeking, um, and or compressor is going bad. Um, and so with the third reason to do it is Friday or the, the rationale is, I don't want to pitch an ambulance service. Um, on this, the weekend, so I'm gonna try to give it in on Monday for a plan, and to put that, um, I have no idea. How much it's going to cost or what it might be, but, um. But the phone calls I were made today, in having them listen to the truck through the phone, um, they thought that it was probably the compressor going bad. Because it runs constantly, or there could have been a leak somewhere, so they went to, but that. Um, but you then, you know, but I believe the company that does the airheads no longer business.
There are any business, but they don't make parts for that anymore, they actually went to the hydraulics of the, the fluid system now, so. So, when I was there, we had problems getting parts for that, right, it was bad, you. There's a third-party company that I, I think the last time that I had to go through to get the magnets for leveling, and that took forever. So it's, it's, yeah, it's not supported anymore.
So, um, yeah, it depends on, I don't know how much it's gonna cost or what, my, yeah, my, but. Oh, yeah, there's a switch, I don't know, I, I don't want to be, but, I don't know, it's, you know, but. Um, just, well, you guys are aware that we're gonna come back for, for. Like I said.
All right, well, we'll learn more in June, thank you, Ryan.
Give us postponed.
Oh, we did postpone, but yes. Tim made the first, yeah, definitely the second. Okay, so now we have our purchasing policy to review, um, this is our last item of general business. So we looked at a revised purchasing policy, um, with assistance from financial advisors, um, so you can see here the. The levels of authorization are less than two thousand, department head approval, two to five thousand, city administrator approval, fifty-five to twenty-five thousand, city council approval. Above twenty-five and below one seventy-five, council approval with sealed bids or direct negotiation of two written quotes. Unless they can only be shown that, like, maybe in this instance, um, there's only one source available, and over one seventy-five. Form of presentation specifications like we had tonight. Uh, any questions about the, and then additional, um, guidance related to oversight conflicts of interest, purchasing levels, procedures for government surplus. Purchaser response release and effective dates, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make motion to approve.
Thank you, Dean, do you have a second? Jean have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Very good, all right, so.
Aye.
Thank you, Dean, donations. Um. Yep, all right, so we can entertain a motion to approve the following very generous donations, um, to the library in memory of, um, Eugene Woodley. John and John Woodley and Sister Nertner, twenty-five dollars, in memory of Dan Mur- Murdis, I think, twelve thousand, twenty-five dollars, to the Friends of the Library. Uh, in memory of Rob Stansfield, Friends of the Library, twenty-five dollars, in memory of Tom Dinner, Tom Dinner by Devon Mike Smith, twenty-five dollars. Uh, to the summer reading program, the insurance, twenty-five dollars, for coffee supplies in the Friends of the Library, a hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-two cents. And for fireworks, a hundred dollars, you have a funeral home, two hundred from Martin and Dennis Street, one hundred from Guilford Mutual Insurance, two hundred from Calon Lines, the Calon Lines Club. Two hundred from Heritage Laundry, fifty dollars from Paul Bush Auto, twenty-five dollars from River Valley Outfitters, five hundred dollars from WNB Financial. A hundred dollars from Perry Dental, a hundred from Wabashaw Rummage Repairable, a hundred and fifty dollars from Puffing Check Insurance. Fifty dollars from Happyville Brewery, two hundred and fifty dollars from John Duffing, two hundred dollars from the American Legion of Zory, unit fifty. A hundred dollars from J and M Powers, five hundred dollars from the American Legion Post fifty, and for the athletic field complex, in memory of Lucille Dick from. Very long list of donors, nine hundred and sixty dollars, from Peter and Barbara Mathias, John and Sandy Wolf, John and Mary Fleming. Peter Mathias and Russell Meyer, Jane Campa, Potter, Steve, Steven Ivan Kiplinski, Roger. Richard and Ruth Carter, Robin, kind of a rock, Larry, Jane Lander, Perry Properties, Roseanne Woodley, Mary Fun, Barbara, Donna, Donna Dick. Robert and Diane Chio, Captain Burns, James and Heidi Curtis, Peter and Sharon Reister, John and Herman Cassie, Gary Lonsky, Gerald and Susan Daylon. Um. I think that's probably, Vicky Johnson, Myrtle Keane, Lori and James Perry, Diane and Fred Scholberg, John and Jeff Cry, John and Kate Rock. RF and S A H, Haft, and Robert and Joel Woodley, do we have a motion to approve the donation?
That's good.
Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, so good.
Give a second from Tim, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, all right, and then we have some announcements. Um, before we adjourn, so we've got, um, do you need to select a date for the housing workshop, the leads are out in May twenty-second and twenty-fourth, I'd be a six P M. Joint workshop of court authority and city council.
And I just realized one of those days interfered to touch a truck, so may prefer day will be the twenty-fourth.
I'll be late the twenty-fourth, but also maybe half hour, maybe less.
Anybody else have a conflict with the twenty-fourth? Right, that's awesome, I will miss the touch a truck event, I will be out of state.
Which day did you pick it, twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth at six P M. Any other announcements?
Um, with that, sorry, I didn't see the start time, um, I feel like. If we can, four is ideal, is that, or, but you couldn't make it earlier, Brian, on the twenty-fourth.
Uh, I could come at four, and then I'd probably be there for duration, I might get about a little early.
Did everyone else do four o'clock on the twenty-fourth, and we'll just need to verify with the library, but I wouldn't think that they have other programming. Otherwise, we can move the location forward to city hall.
Yeah, four is fine.
This four o'clock on the twenty-fourth, for you, Dean?
It does.
Great, all right, so we'll talk more than one more, very good, all right, thanks, everybody, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, touch a truck event.
Oh, you want to.
Just a quick promotion.
So, sir.
Come see our public work staff at Wabashaw Keanlock School, May twenty-second, five to seven. Tony said kids can go in the truck, but they will be there to touch it.
I want, with your sticky little hands.
Sticky little hands.
Sad to miss it.
No, we, there's public works, we, we love our public works department, I'm super excited, you know, pulling off.
You're, you're the prime touch a truck, yours and your.
I am, I am.
Very good, and I heard most of yours from Jack, and then your second, the second from Tim, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.